Good afternoon. This meeting of the Arizona Independent Redistricting Commission will now come to order. Today is Saturday, October 29th, and the time is 4:04 PM. Let's begin with roll call, since some of us are on the phone, and we'll all try to be, speak, you know, one at a time and slowly, so that our court reporter can get an accurate transcript. Vice Chair Freeman?
Here.
Vice Chair Herrera?
Here.
Commissioner McNulty?
Here.
Commissioner Sturz?
Here.
We have a quorum. We also have legal advice with us today, and I believe Joe Canefield is in Yuma, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mary O'Grady is on the phone, Mary?
Yes, I'm on the phone.
And Jay Kaboo?
Yes, also on the phone.
And is Kristin Winberg on the phone?
I'm also here.
Great, okay. And then, is our mapping consultant here?
No, no, he, Willie, was here, he left.
Okay. And is our executive director Ray Bladine on the phone?
Yes, he is.
And it sounds like that's Buck Forst, is that right?
Yes, Buck is here.
Our chief technology officer, and then, we have a court reporter, is that Michelle?
That is Michelle. And we also have Christina Gomez.
Okay, and our deputy executive director Christina Gomez. Is there anyone else on the phone or in person in Yuma that I've missed?
Michael.
We, uh...
One citizen.
We have one citizen that's part of the audience.
Okay.
Do we, do we, we normally don't name them.
No, just let her know.
Great, well, I think that concludes roll call, then. Our next item on the agenda is legal advice, direction to counsel, discussion and possible action regarding issues raised in correspondence from Governor Brewer concerning commission conduct. The commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for the purpose of obtaining legal advice and providing direction to counsel.
Madam Chair, this is Mary, I have one suggestion, perhaps. I know we have another item on the agenda, which is an update on the litigation with the Attorney General, and some of that might be able to be covered in open session, in terms of that update, would it make sense to do that first?
Yes, I think that's a great idea.
And, so if we go to that issue, Joe, would you want to give the update there?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the commission, I'll give a quick update. Mary and Jay may want to add, add it onto my summary. On Friday, yesterday, the court in the consolidated cases granted the motion to disqualify that was filed by the individual commissioners, this was a motion to disqualify the Attorney General. What that essentially has done is, the case is now basically on hold temporarily, while the judge, I don't have the order before me, Jay may, Mary may have it, but I believe the judge indicated that the counsel, the new counsel representing the state or the Attorney General would need to appear by, I think, November 25th, and that at that point, the court would probably, perhaps resume the proceedings. There was a deadline, a filing deadline, I think on Tuesday, for, for the parties to file, at least the commission to file a reply brief to the motion for summary judgment. The court has essentially delayed that filing until new counsel appears. And also, the court canceled the hearing that was scheduled, or the oral argument that was scheduled, I believe, for November 7th. So, at this point in time, the matter is still, the case still exists, the Attorney General's been disqualified. He, the Attorney General, Horn, on Friday, shortly after the order came out, issued a press release indicating that he would not pursue an appeal of that disqualification, but instead, he would refer the case to Maricopa County Attorney Bill Montgomery. And he indicated in the press release that he has done so, we have not heard from Maricopa County Bill Montgomery as of yet, but this all, of course, happened yesterday, so I suspect that we will hear something next week. Mary, Jay, did I get all that right?
Yeah, this is Jay, the only thing I would add is the court has scheduled a status conference to discuss the new briefing schedule and the new oral argument date. That status conference is November 30th, at 11:00 AM.
Yeah, I don't have anything further to add on that point.
Okay, any questions, commissioners? Okay, well, hearing none, I think now we can go back to agenda item two, unless there's anything else.
Nope.
Okay, so, we're on legal advice, direction to counsel, discussion and possible action regarding issue raised in correspondence from Governor Brewer concerning commission conduct. Is there anything that anyone, legal counsel wants to say in public session?
Madam Chair, this is Joe. I sent a letter to the commissioners yesterday, which I'm happy to discuss in open session, if that's the wish of the commission.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Canefield, on his letter?
Madam Chair, this is Scott Freeman.
Mr. Freeman.
Uh, I, I have some concerns about the commission going into executive session in light of the legal positions the commission has taken with respect to the AG investigation. It's my belief, based on a quick review of at least one of the briefs, that the commission is taking the position that the open meeting laws do not apply to it. And if that's the case, I mean, our agenda cites, I believe, a section from Arizona's open meeting laws to justify going into executive session, I, I'm, so I'm a little concerned about that, to get legal advice. And so I'm a little concerned whether, at this point, we can do anything in executive session, in light of the fact that the Constitution says the commission will conduct its business in public meetings. So I guess I'd like to maybe get some understanding from legal counsel on that issue.
Okay, I'll respond, and then Joe, if you, if you want to supplement. We have been, through the history of the commission, citing the statutes, as Commissioner Freeman indicates. We are, as we've looked at it in terms of the, in our recent dealings with the Attorney General, have come to the conclusion that the better approach, really, is that the constitutional provisions that govern the commission itself, that are in Proposition 106, are the principles that govern the commission conduct. Now, as a reference point in implementing those constitutional provisions, for the most part, we are also referring to the statutory provisions, whenever possible, because there is some legal uncertainty. That issue hasn't been resolved by the courts yet, it is pending. As to our ability to go into executive session, which is not specifically addressed in the constitutional provisions, I am, I'm very confident that the commission, even in the context of the open meeting requirement in the Constitution, has the ability to have confidential attorney-client communications and conversations with its counsel, that it needs that in order to, you know, give counsel, give advice and give direction to its attorneys, and receive legal advice. So, even though it's not specifically outlined in the Constitution, that longstanding attorney-client privilege needs to be preserved, and this is how you'd preserve it. He makes a good point, that I think we should work with staff to revisit how we are noticing our meetings, and so, let's do that, to elaborate a little better in terms of the basis for the privilege in the executive session.
Madam Chair and counsel, I, certainly you don't have to explain to me the importance of, you know, the need to have confidential attorney-client communications. I, I just have the concern that, would, would the commission be undermining the position it's taking in these legal proceedings, if we're citing the statute, invoking it to go into executive session? I guess what I'm hearing is, you don't see a problem going forward in that manner?
I think we are, I think we should work with staff to not simply cite the statutes, which has been the commission practice, but to also cite the constitutional provisions and the general attorney-client privilege. But as a matter of kind of open meeting principles, I think that the, the agenda gives notice of what we're discussing, and gives notice of the possibility of executive session, and we certainly have the authority to go into an executive session, I think even under our, and I think that court would no doubt recognize that under the constitutional provision to get attorney-client advice. So I think we should be able to continue as we have and go into, go into executive session.
Are there, are there other instances where a constitutional provision can be sort of modified or trumped by sort of a common law principle regarding attorney-client privilege, communications?
I don't view this as trumping the constitutional requirement. I view this as how, as, candidly, I don't, I don't think that's the correct way to look at it. It's applying those constitutional principles in this, in this context.
What, what should the commission be citing in its agendas when this comes up in the future? What would we cite?
How about if I work with staff on that, and, and I think, and will develop appropriate citations?
Okay, any other questions, and any questions for Mr. Canefield on his letter?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Sturz?
With that being said, is there a concern that we have not properly noticed this, this meeting?
No.
In regards to the, for you to go into executive session?
No, I'm not concerned. The purpose of the agenda is to give notice of what we're going to discuss at the meeting, and what's going to happen at this meeting, and, and we've done so. There's no problem with lack of notice to the public of what we're doing at this meeting. But I think Commissioner Freeman makes a good point, that we can be clear to the, in terms of our constitutional authority to, you know, that governs the commission's conduct. And I think we'll include the statutes too, frankly, because we, because the court, because it's an open question, that the court has not yet decided, in terms of the interplay between the statutes and the constitutional provisions.
Madam Chair, I guess my question is, and I'd like to make sure that we're, I get a clear answer from counsel, will there be any opportunity for any of the decisions that come out of today's hearing, based on the sense of uncertainty of whether or not that we would be wanting to add provisions later on in other notices to the public, that any decisions today that may be made or considered would be subject to challenge?
I don't see any risk that the decisions, based on the issues that we've been discussing, would be subject to challenge. If decisions are made, they'll be made in an open session.
Thank you.
Any other questions for counsel? Okay, well, is there any briefing counsel wants to give with regard to the correspondence from Governor Brewer?
Madam Chair, this is Joe, again, I, as I mentioned earlier, with the, with the commission's permission, I would, I would like to address the commission with respect to the letter I sent.
Madam Chair, this is Jose.
Oh, Mr. Herrera?
Yeah, if, if Mr. Canefield feels this is an appropriate time for us to hear this letter in open, in open session, I would love to hear it.
Other commissioners?
Madam Chair, this is Linda McNulty, that's fine with me, if that's Mr. Canefield's I would understand his letter to mean that he would not be participating in executive session, is that correct? Mr. Canefield?
Yes, that's correct. So I thought it would make sense to, for me to explain the letter, you know, in open session, if, if it's, if that's the wish of the commission, and then, I would excuse myself.
Madam Chair, it's Scott Freeman.
Mr. Freeman.
I, I definitely think this should be discussed in open session.
Okay. Do you have any comments, Mr. Sturz?
Yeah, I happen to concur.
Okay, over to you, Mr. Canefield.
Madam Chair, members of the commission, very briefly, yesterday, October 28th, I sent you all a letter indicating that, as a result of the governor's letter dated October 26th, this has presented a conflict of interest for me and my law firm, Ballard &amp; Spar. The governor is a current client of the firm on unrelated matters, and of course, as you all know, she's a former client of mine, in my former capacity as her general counsel. Therefore, I've communicated to Mary O'Grady, that I believe that it would be best for the commission to be represented on the matter relating to the governor's letter, and any proceedings relating to it by counsel other than me and Ballard &amp; Spar. I understand that Osborne Mallon is prepared to undertake this representation, and that I would be happy to continue representing the commission as before, on all other matters in accordance with our contract, with the permission of the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Canefield, is there any comment, or discussion, or question for him? Is that Mr. Herrera?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, do we need to accept, how does that work, do we need to, or do you?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, it's not completely clear to me, but I think I would prefer the commission to authorize me to continue to represent you on all matters upon which you have contracted for me to do, so, with the exception of the governor's letter and any proceedings that may follow from it, and I think that that is easy to do with Osborne Mallon, and any other representation that commissioners may undertake. But it would, ethically, it would give me a lot more comfort, knowing that I had the permission of the body to continue.
Any comments or questions on that?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is Commissioner Herrera, I just have one question, when we, when we move forward this motion, and we have someone, or we have the Mary O'Grady's law firm representing us in this matter, will, will there be a Republican attorney filling in the shoes of Mr. Canefield, from Osborne Mallon?
Um, this is Mary, if that's a question directed for me, I, I haven't added a Republican to our team, or I don't know what the party affiliation is of folks that are on the case now, frankly.
Sure.
Of those I'm working with. So I just planned on continuing to staff it as, as, as we need to staff it, without regard to party affiliation.
Madam Chair.
Is that Mr. Canefield?
That's Mr. Herrera, but you were close.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Herrera.
Yeah, you know, I, this may not be a big issue, I just wanted to raise that, because we want to make sure that everyone feels like they're being represented. So, again, this may not be a big issue, but I wanted to raise it just in case.
Madam Chair, this is, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Ms. McNulty?
I'll defer to whoever had, had me in line, go ahead.
I don't know who that was.
Rick Sturz.
Okay, Mr. Sturz?
The, uh, both, both legal firms represent the commission as a body, and do not represent the individual commissioners.
Madam Chair, this is Linda McNulty, I agree with that, and I think that Mr. Canefield will continue to be representing us as a body in all matters other than this particular question. So I, I, I'm not concerned.
Madam Chair, was it, was it a motion from Ms. McNulty, could be Commissioner McNulty?
No, but I'd be happy to make a motion, Madam Chair, if you would like one, that... Well, I, I have some concerns, if I may, in terms of our agenda. Okay. That if we need to address that issue, which I don't think we need to do by motion, um, it wouldn't be on today's agenda. Okay. And I can confer with Joe, if he, if he'd like us to put that on a future agenda. But I think it's clear that he's just recusing from one piece of the representation, and would continue with all others under his contract. Ms. O'Grady, perhaps a motion isn't even necessary, just a sense for Mr. Canefield from us, since I think we've just given him that we would want him to proceed in the way he described. That sounds fine.
Madam Chair, it's Scott Freeman.
Mr. Freeman.
Uh, I agree, I mean, I have no problem with Ballard &amp; Spar proceeding with representing the commission in other aspects, but, but I have no idea what's to come. So, I would ask that this please be put on as a future agenda items going forward, just so we have the opportunity, as, as, you know, the situation unfolds, to address it on an ongoing basis.
Madam Chair, this is Linda McNulty, I would request that we add it as legal counsel conclude it's, it's necessary in light of whatever may develop, if and when it becomes necessary.
Any other comments or discussion on this? So I guess, Mr. Canefield, you'll be exiting the meeting now?
Yes, Madam...
If we, if we go into executive session, I guess?
Well, Madam Chair, members of the commission, at this point, given the agenda item, I think it would be appropriate for me to excuse myself, and I will do so.
Back to work, Mr. Canefield.
Okay, I'm going to drive back to Phoenix, so...
Back to your desk.
Okay, is there anything else that can be said in public session about the correspondence from Governor Brewer? Okay, then, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session, for the purpose of obtaining legal advice and providing direction to counsel on this matter.
This is Linda McNulty, so moved.
Commissioner Herrera, a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's, the motion carries unanimously, I didn't hear any nays. So, we'll now go into a...
Madam Chair, Scott Freeman.
Yeah.
Uh, I, I would just like the record to reflect that I abstained from that vote.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Madam Chair...
So, Mr. Freeman is abstaining, and did I miss anyone else?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had my mute on, as I was saying I abstained, so, I, I understand and recognize the, the opinion of our legal counsel, but for the purposes of what's going on, and the different briefings, briefs that have been filed, and the way that this meeting has been noted, I'm going to abstain from this vote.
Okay.
Okay, is, um, is that, okay. Um, we'll go ahead and then say that three, there were three ayes then, Commissioners Herrera, McNulty, and Mathis, and two abstentions, Sturz and Freeman, and with that, that ends public session, the time is 4:30 PM, and once the public is cleared out, we will go ahead and enter executive session.
Sure, Madam Mathis, I'll let you know when the public's cleared out.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to authorize legal counsel to proceed as directed in executive session.
This is Linda McNulty, so moved.
Is there a second?
I think Ms., Commissioner McNulty moved it.
Okay, so, is, Mary, can you help on that one? I don't know who just said that.
I can second it, this is Commissioner Herrera, I can second it if needed.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm hearing, I heard Ms. McNulty and Mr. Freeman, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. McNulty and Mr. Herrera say aye, are there any nays?
Nay. Nay.
Okay, so, it sounds like there are three ayes and two nays. The three ayes are McNulty, Herrera, and Mathis, and the nays are Freeman and Sturz?
Yep.
Is there any other comment on this particular item, number two, on the agenda?
Madam Chair, it's Scott Freeman.
Mr. Freeman.
I'm not, I'm not sure if that, if the last motion encompassed within it included future meetings, and their scheduling. I just need some clarification on that, I don't know if that needs to be discussed as well, or can be discussed, even.
Ms. O'Grady, can you advise on that?
Um, well, the motion is to direct me to proceed as directed in executive session. And so, I will, I will, I will do so, and that includes any, any follow-up with staff that might be necessary. And candidly, I don't really want to, at this point, go into any substance of what was discussed in executive session.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Well, I guess I can say, apart from, you know, disclosing what's, well, without disclosing anything in executive session, you know, we may well have follow-up meetings on, you know, this and related issues, and we'll work with staff to do that.
Okay, thanks, Mary. Okay, thanks, Mary. Any other comments or questions? Okay, that takes us to the next item on the agenda, which is legal advice discussion and possible action regarding retaining counsel for individual commissioners to address allegations under Article Four, Part Two, Section 10, I'm sorry, Section One. The commission may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public for the purpose of obtaining legal advice and direction to counsel. Is there anything counsel wanted to say in public on this matter?
No, at this point, I think it's more appropriate for executive session.
I would entertain a motion to go into executive session to obtain legal advice and provide direction to counsel on this Agenda Item Three.
This is Linda McNulty. I'll make that motion.
This is Jose Herrera, I second the motion.
Okay, any, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I abstain for reasons previously stated.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear, there were two people talking.
Madam Chair. I abstain for reasons previously stated.
I have no idea what you're saying.
Okay, Mr. Sturts abstains.
Madam Chair.
We haven't voted though yet, but, go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman?
I'm sorry, too. Madam Chair, I abstain as well.
Okay, so three are in favor of going into executive session and there are two abstentions. The two abstentions are Commissioners Freeman and Sturts. And so with that, we will exit out of public session and go into executive session once the public is cleared out. The time is 5:08 PM. Session, the time is 5:58 PM. And I'd just like to do a roll call to make sure we have all commissioners still on the So Vice Chair Freeman?
Here.
Vice Chair Herrera?
Here.
Commissioner McNulty?
Here.
Commissioner Sturts?
Here.
Okay, great. And I'm here too and I know Yuma's there, so the legal counsel. And then we have Jay Kaboo on the line, I think?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm here.
And also Kristen Winberg?
Yes, I'm still here.
Great, okay. So we just had executive session on Agenda Item Three. Is there any discussion or motion arising from our executive session?
Madam Chair, Ms. O'Grady, are we able to have discussion before we have a motion?
You can discuss the motion. I guess you can, you can typically discuss an agenda item generally or ask questions on an agenda item if that's necessary before you formulate a motion.
I guess I would like to ask Vice Chair Freeman and Commissioner Sturts if they would want to make a motion requesting that we all be represented by legal counsel in connection with any matters related to Article Four, Part Two, Section One, Paragraph 10.
Madam Chair, it's Scott Freeman.
Mr. Freeman?
Madam Chair, I have concerns about the subject matter of this agenda item. The governor has sent us all a letter that wherein she details a number of concerns she has, serious concerns about the manner in which the commission has conducted its business and the manner in which commissioners have conducted their business. I think these concerns are not just the governor's. I think they're shared by a lot of people in the public and I take all of them very seriously. I think the Constitution requires the commission to conduct its business in public meetings. It also speaks, and I don't have the language in front of me, but about the commissioners committing themselves to conduct themselves in a fair and honest and impartial manner and to commit themselves to conducting themselves in a manner that would build confidence in the public and the integrity of the process. I think it is in the best interest of the commission for the commissioners to respond to the governor's letter as she requested and address the concerns. And I just, at this point, I don't think it's appropriate at this time to take the step of authorizing the expenditure of additional public funds to have additional legal representation for individual commissioners. Indeed, I think it, I have some concern whether it would compound the concern set forth in Paragraph Number Seven in the governor's letter. So I'm not prepared to make a motion at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Freeman. I would then, Madam Chair, if you would accept it, make a motion.
Yes, I would entertain a motion.
I would move that we authorize Commissioners Herrera, Mathis and McNulty to obtain representation for any matters related to or arising out of Article Four, Part Two, Section One, Paragraph 10 of the Arizona Constitution. And I would do that because we, I believe, have made every effort and have successfully made every effort to conduct ourselves in an honest, independent and impartial fashion. And I think it's critical for the integrity of this constitutional body that we be represented in order to respond to these allegations.
Madam Chair, I second that motion and I agree exactly with the wording that Commissioner McNulty said.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the vote was Commissioners McNulty, Herrera and Mathis voted aye, Commissioners Freeman and Sturts voted nay. Any other discussion or comment on that agenda item? Okay, let's see, I got to pull up the agenda. Okay, that covers all the agenda items as listed except adjournment. And the time now is 6:04 PM and I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.